We're ready to convene and I just want to thank you all for, you know, coming. Before we get started, you know, I feel that I would like to make a statement about primarily why we're here today and what we're confronting. And I don't think it's any question to either of us that we are living in some challenging times nationally, locally, throughout the Commonwealth. And there are certain issues that are going to be brought before us that we're going to have to confront. And one of the things that came up was, you know, the issue of the Second Amendment thing that obviously was brought to the forefront, you know, at our last open-mic night where we had, you know, tremendous crowd turnout. We also encountered a number of logistical challenges to what was going on. But that being said, that, you know, we were going to confront and, you know, deal with, you know, the issue going forward. And tomorrow, I guess logistically it was challenging to us because we're just coming off of our Christmas break and New York break. And so this issue was going to be on the agenda for tomorrow, which was going to be a rather crowded agenda. And I thought in fairness, because once again, this is an issue that this council is not going to be unified on, and also that a number of other people are not going to be unified on. And my thought was by having the one issue brought forward on a particular day would allow proponents and opponents from both sides to come in a climate of fairness that would go on there. So, you know, but, you know, but once again, I just wanted to give the rationale as to why we're here today. And as we get forward, going forward now, I would like to, you know, convene the session for us to have the opportunity to talk. In accordance with Virginia Beach Code, Section 2-1, and by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, I call for a special session of the Virginia Beach Council to hold a city council discussion on a resolution in support of the Second Amendment rights. Monday, January 6, 2020, 4:00 to 5:30 p.m., City Manager's Conference Room, Building 1, City Hall, 2nd floor, 204, 2401 Courthouse Drive. For the discussion, the city council will hold a special formal session in order to take public comment and then consider the resolution. On Monday, December 6, 6:00 at City Council Chambers, Building 1, City Hall, 2nd floor, 2401 Courthouse Drive. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, you said December 6. I think you meant January 6.
I meant January 6, yes. That is correct. You made that correction. But once again, you know, prior to, and, you know, once again, I think it's essential that we get together as, you know, council. We have a lot of things ahead of us between the city manager, upcoming budget and everything. And, you know, once again, you know, the ability to at least have some discussion prior to us going outside and to allow members, you know, to express their viewpoints, concerns, and, you know, this is why we are here this afternoon. So at this point, open the floor for any comment or any discussion. Anybody? Rosemary?
I'll just say briefly that I think it's important to support all the amendments. I mean, not just the second.
Yeah.
I mean, we took the oath of office to support the Constitution includes all amendments.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, I think we would concur with that. You know, anybody else at this point? Yeah, but, you know, like I said, you know, once again, you know, the opportunity to speak. And, you know, once again, I'm just going to be honest. I know this is a tough one for us. I know we are not unified on this. But it is something that, you know, this is a national, not only a national discussion, but one that is prominent in the Commonwealth and, you know, going forward. But, once again, the appeal will be to get the people together, both proponents and opponents, and also appeal to civility that we would have some productive comment going forward. But at least I wanted to at least offer the people the opportunity. Jim?
No, I don't mean to put the staff on the spot, but I think maybe if y'all could explain how it's going to work tonight, or Tom, or somebody with the speakers, because it's a, it's a large, larger number of speakers than we normally have, obviously.
Sure.
Do you maybe want to use the podium?
Hi, Kitty. Good afternoon. So as of 3:55 today, we have 67 speakers signed up. 67. So we have reserved, if you're, if you're the council and you're looking out the right side of the chamber for speakers that will hold 78, and then the area right outside of the chamber, the waiting area, that holds 22. If we go over that capacity, then we'll have a deputy clerk downstairs and we'll help direct some of the speakers upstairs when they're, they're being called. So, but at this point, those are the numbers we have tonight.
Everybody has a number?
Everybody will have a number, and they have an assigned seat. And, like I said, on the left-hand side, well, if you're the council looking out, it's on the right-hand side of the chamber.
Okay. Any questions? Rosemary?
I know Chesapeake, I only had two minutes since they had so many. Are we still doing three minutes or are we doing two?
I think in fairness to everybody going forward, especially, I would not anybody that might be opposed to this to feel that they were not given the full opportunity to express themselves. And I think one of the rationales about having a special meeting was for the allowance to make sure that this is thoroughly discussed and embedded. So if it's okay, we're going to stick with the three minutes. Anybody else? Any other questions?
I would like to know concerning notice to the public, how much notice was given to the public regarding this matter? Because I have received some concerns that the public was, this was something that was kind of sprung last minute, and a lot of the public and community don't feel like they had enough time to prepare to be here tonight.
What date did the announcement go out?
On the 30th.
When, you know, on the 30th. Okay? And, you know, Sabrina, I wish, you know, that I could, you know, say, but once again, this was a topic that has been roundly discussed in the public with other cities, you know, having similar meetings. It has been a very hot topic, and it was supposed to be on for tomorrow as part of the normal agenda. But, you know, given the crowdedness of it, and this is the opportunity, but, but once again, we are going to hear from the public tonight. We have close to 70 people, you know, that are going to be, you know, coming and have the opportunity to be heard. And the other thing is, and if I could also explain, and trust me, I'm acutely aware of, you know, with some of our email discussions. You know, it, you know, it's a topic that, you know, one way or the other, we have to confront. If we were to do nothing and just, you know, taking no action, then tomorrow, we would assume that during open-mic night, we would have, you know, another crowd. This is, you know, not the optimal way, but I think, I think one of the logistics of coming off a holiday break. And the fact is, you know, you know, trying to take an action that some of our sister cities have, you know, also taken prior to, you know, the delegation going forward. And the other thing is, I think we were especially mindful of actions, you know, and terminology that would not in any way bring forward that we would disrespect law. I think we are all in agreement on one thing, that we respect the law, the Constitution, and as Rosemary said, the entire Constitution of the United States, but also the Commonwealth. And that, you know, that we would not want to be in a position to direct anybody not to enforce a law. And from my perspective, and my concern with this, especially with the wording, and we did get, you know, the resolution out for circulation among the council for a little while. And granted, once again, Sabrina, I agree, not everybody's going to be in consensus on this, but obviously there will be other discussions going forward. That I think if we sent the wrong message out, that would create, you know, a slippery slope, you know, for other items that may come up in the future. You know, once again, you know, you know, the timing had a lot to do with this. We were on hiatus, certainly if we were still in break and everything. But I think the fact that, you know, we did have a, you know, a number of people come out and speak at open mic, and the, the issue has been prominent in the press, not only for Virginia Beach, but for a number of other cities in the locality, you know. And we're going to have a number of people out there speaking tonight, you know, both pro and con, and they are being afforded the opportunity and, you know, the respect and dignity.
So let's talk about the timing, because, you know, in my opinion, this resolution was expedited from what we talked about before we left. The last conversation that I remember having was that we were considering making it a part of our legislative packet, or some other talks about discussion, more discussion on the matter. And then I get a notice that we're having a special session, a resolution has been prepared. That's not something that I foresaw coming or being expedited the way that it did. So I'm a little concerned about that process.
Okay. But once again, like I, you know, as I said, I think with the situation of us being on hiatus, and, you know, once again, with the lateness of the, you know, with, you know, legislators going to thing, you know, this is a course of action that, but once again, this is a resolution simply requesting that the legislator, legislature, you know, but I think, and I'm just going to be honest with you, Sabrina, I think from what I understand, you know, there are changes coming in Richmond. And a couple of the prefilings that were sent in that may never see the light of day, I think may have influenced some people, you know, to react. And, you know, don't forget, this is not just a local Virginia Beach phenomenon, this is a thing that's happening throughout the state. So by just, you know, by just taking a position, not asking for a sanctuary situation, but, you know, that we uphold the Constitution, I think it would give comfort to people. And I think if it's explained to people, and one of the ways that hopefully, that we sit, maybe the forum that we have tonight, where let's get people in the room that are both for and against this, and see what kind of commonality that we can find in moving forward. I'll be with, okay, yeah, go right ahead.
I just have a question.
Sure.
You say, you say give comfort to people?
Well, I'm trying to, in other words, to let people know that their government is, you know, concerned about, you know, I think the imposition of, you know, laws that may not, you know, by their terms be considered constitutional. But the point I would like to make is to let people know there are remedies for laws that are considered unjust by the courts, and I think that is the safest way to go. And by getting people together, let me, if I can explain that, Aaron.
Yeah, I was just, I was just curious on, you saying give comfort to people, which people are you comforting?
Well, I think a lot of people, that the government is actually out listening to them, and both sides. When I, I had the opportunity a number of months ago to go out to Dayton, Ohio, to meet with the mayor of Dayton after their tragedy, and also with the Parkland mayor. And I was asked flat out, you know, what I thought about gun controls and how far I'd be willing to go. Once again, if there was a simple solution to this, it would have been done a long time ago. And I said I was for universal background checks and other ways that, you know, we may be able to do things. But when I came to other things, I said, what is missing in this country are people sitting down and trying to find commonality and other ways of, you know, addressing this problem? Nobody's talking to each other. When this topic comes up, we are polarized and paralyzed. So the thing is, by having these type of discussions, hopefully tonight, and we're hoping that the tone is one of civility and listening to each other, and I think this might be a standard that we could set. Yes, we did have certain logistical challenges coming into this, but, but once again, it's a problem that, a situation that I think that we as a council are, you know, can address. But then, you know, and then, but once again, you know, we have a, we have an awesome task ahead of us as a council going forward. And I know, you know, by the decision, you know, to have the special meeting and move the way we did, there's not consensus on this council. But the point is though, if we can somehow stimulate that civility and, you know, that discussions and start bringing people together, you know, that would be my personal hope. Anybody else?
I would agree with bringing people together to, to talk about and to discuss this issue, because it is a very serious matter. But I would have liked to see more discussion prior to a vote. Just because, I mean, as you mentioned, it's very serious. I'm sure there could have been a lot of, lot more input into the resolution, a lot more feedback, you know, into developing the resolution. And then, you know, I do hear the comment about confirming the Constitution and so on. I mean, I did that when I took my oath of office.
Right.
And I would not see us doing this for every amendment within the Constitution. We already did that. So if this is just to confirm that specific amendment, I'm not sure I understand, you know, how this is going to change anything. We're not going to change the Second Amendment. People have a right to bear arms. We're not going to change that. And the resolution put forth tonight, it's not going to change that. They have, the public has a right to bear arms, and I'm in agreement with it. So I really don't see the, I guess, the importance in what this will change.
Well, I think, Sabrina, you know, the thing in light of, you know, of the actions of Chesapeake and some of our sister cities, you know, but once again, you know, it's, you know, hopefully, you know, like I said, this is not a perfect process. It's a, it's a, you know, it's, it's been a topic that's been, you know, on the table for many, many, you know, decades, if not centuries. The thing is, if we can somehow go forward and we can start building those bridges, because obviously, you know, we, you know, we live in dangerous times, and since our tragedy, there have been a number of other tragedies. I think it's time for rational discussion, and hopefully that can start tonight.
I would just echo, you know, you've mentioned, you know, Chesapeake, all the other cities, but they're not Virginia Beach.
Right.
And these other municipalities did not experience a tragedy less than eight months ago.
Mm-hmm.
And so I'm just curious that we are placing more of a focus on things that are very divisive to us. Everyone is on both sides of the issue.
Right.
As opposed, as opposed to what unites us. I mean, because either way you look at this tonight, there are families, victims' families, there are staff members, some who feel they wish they had their firearm on that day. There's some who never want to see a firearm, don't, don't want to be near a firearm. And yet, here we are, less than a year, eight months to be exact, from this tragedy, discussing a topic as divisive as this in the midst of a healing community. It worries me.
Now, Aaron, I truly appreciate that. And in many ways, we are a divided community about, you know, firearms, who carries and, you know, who doesn't. Once again, my hope, you know, this was a situation that has been brought to us in a very, very strong way by members of the public. We honestly believe all members of the public should be heard, even on both sides. And I'm just going to say, Aaron, it is my hope that this is not just an end of one thing, this is just a beginning of a long conversation that we're going to have. There are people, yes, we were a city whose foundation was rocked. And there are some people, and it causes even, maybe even some more polarizations about, you know, what's going out there. But we have to have the conversation, and my sincere hope is that we start it tonight. John?
Yeah, I spoke to a group on Saturday, and some of you may have watched the video of it about this issue. I'm sure everything I had to say wasn't liked, because I've said from the very beginning, I think that it can't be a sanctuary city, we have to obey the law. But I do know that many millions of Americans have given their lives to defend the Constitution of the United States. I do agree with the mayor that a, that a pro-Constitutional is the common ground. Anyone who has thoroughly read the McDonald's law, the Supreme Court decision in 2010, probably was Chicago case, and has read the case of D.C. versus Heller, which was a 2008 case by the United States Supreme Court, which stands as the interpretation of the Second Amendment. It validates that you can have background checks, validates that there are red flag laws within parameter values that are constitutional. It doesn't say you can ban all assault weapons, you have to define what assault weapons you are banning. You can't require people to lock their guns up and have them so they can't use them in their home for self-protection. That was the second part of the D.C. So I think in some parts, if you look at this in the right way, because it is an emotional issue, I couldn't agree more. And it's, as a matter of fact, you can't probably talk to either extreme on a rational basis, because it's so emotional, and I can understand why. And it probably always will be. But the common ground, which everyone should say, is that we agree that there is a constitutional right. It's not absolute, and that's what Heller versus, D.C. versus Heller says. Government's right to regulate isn't absolute, and it will be an evolving set of balances between where individuals and where the public good overweighs and allows for the infringement. But we can all agree that whatever the General Assembly passes is presumed to be constitutional. I think we've been at that. And so we're going to enforce what that is. Whatever they do do, we can all rest assured, someone's going to go to court over it, and it'll all be adjudicated, and we'll find out where that constitutional common ground is. But, you know, as, and yes, it does seem like it's relatively short to its tragedy, but it's tragic, all the people who gave their lives to defend the document that we live under. So I, I don't know that it dishonors them in any way, or disrespects that event, or discounts it in any way. But if we think that in the end, if we're trying to get the public to come to a consensus that we are all law-abiding citizens, and there's a right way to adjudicate our differences, and that's through the ballot box is one place. As Abraham Lincoln is, we don't solve problems with a bullet, we solve them with the ballot box. That's Abraham Lincoln. And you do that, and that not compelling, and I'll give you a good example. When we had the Regional Taxing Authority, you may recall, and they were going to levy taxes, there was a number of us that thought that was unconstitutional, and we fought that very hard. We had to go to court, we spent $450,000 to achieve that. The Attorney General said it was constitutional, the governor signed it, and then about a year later, seven members of unanimous vote in the State Supreme Court said, what? It was unconstitutional. So you can't always say that every act that the General Assembly passes is going to be constitutional, though it is presumed to be so, and I think this body would enforce it. But I do think it points out that the, if we can come to that agreement, then we know and, but whatever happens, there's a legitimate process that's not emotional, driven by reason for its adjudication, and then we can all accept it. We all have a right to be heard, we don't all have a right to prevail. And I'm sure, and that message, I can't say was uniformly warmly received on Saturday morning, but that's the message that I put out there. I think that's the unifying common ground that we can all agree on. I can't tell you how many times I've taken that oath. Every time I've got a promotion, every time I've been reassigned, I've taken the very same oath, except I don't say Commonwealth, Constitution of Virginia, federal Constitution. So I think that means something. I think it means something to people that gave their lives for it. I think it means also something, and I'm sure you've heard from employees on both sides of the issues, who have I had, but in the end, I don't think we can listen to the loud voices on either side to drive our thought process. I think we have to say, what can we all say we support? And I think we can say, we all can say we support the Constitution. It isn't, and all the results aren't going to be what all the people like on either side of this issue, I can assure you. And I ran a bet on Saturday. But in the end, that's what everybody around this table has said they will do. And so I think, I'd like to say is get people to realize that whatever the results are, they're just as committed to following the laws with the presumption of constitutionality. They had a right to be heard on both sides, and the General Assembly's going to know that this is an issue. And I, some of these laws that they've already hidden, the governor's already retreated somewhat on some of them, like taking the guns that people already have legally purchased, because even the National Assault Rifle Bill that was passed by the Congress, and I can't remember the exact year, apologize, never went after the guns that were already in possession, because that's an ex post facto law, they went after the sale and transaction and manufacture of additional ones. So I think there will be some adjustments. They aren't going to make everybody happy on both sides, but I think in the end, they'll find the right balance, a balance based upon reason and balance based on judicial precedent. And so I like the fact that the resolution mentions the court cases, because they really, they really acknowledge the legitimacy of people's points on both sides of the issues as being regulatory permissible, but some things are not regulatory permissible. And I think that's really where we are at. So, could there have been more time? There's always can be more time, I'll say that. But I do, I don't think that the, the resolution and its content and context is offensive to either group, and I'd like, hopefully it commits everyone to live by the adjudication of whatever is passed in a court of law, because that's where it will be done. And that's why I, my hat goes off to the mayor and the others that, because I just signed on to it, I didn't help construct it, I give that credit to the mayor and the vice mayor. But I do think it strikes a good balance for building common ground.
Aaron, I guess, help me understand, you say that this would be adjudicated in a court of law, in which this body has no authority. So help me understand how this body, which has no authority, and from your comment of this is the balance, a good balance, I would beg to differ, because I've gotten the emails and the phone calls to back that up. Help me understand how focus of Virginia Beach on such a divisive, divisive issue, and mind you, the gun debate has been going on for years before, I'll venture to say before anyone was born in this room, is that the gun debate has been going on for years. So help me understand how does a voting resolution, which we all agree more conversation is needed, I think we all agree to that. We all agree we uphold the Constitution of the United States. So help me understand, how does this resolution, which holds no weight, but yet is serving to divide our community that's, that's supposed to, that's in the midst of healing? Help me understand, how does this help?
I don't, I don't accept your assessment, number one. So on that, I don't agree with your, the logic flow. But, but I do think when you see something, some of the bills that have been passed, I mean, proposed and have been filed, there's some aspects of that that are...
You're talking about, I'm just being careful, you're talking about prefiled bills?
Correct.
Okay.
Prefiled bills. If you look at some...
Which, which, you're a very technical guy, which hold no weight.
They do.
Which has to make it out of subcommittee.
God, can I finish?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank, because you asked me my reason, and I'm trying to share it.
I just want to be clear, that's all.
Sure. And that's why we're having this conversation, Aaron.
When?
You understand?
Just like when something's being proposed, and let's say someone was proposing, and whatever it might be, X, doesn't, this is just an issue, it could be any issue, and it's going to get serious consideration, and it's something that the governor's also has said he's supporting, and he has. And so you're trying to wait, the time to influence something before, it's not after it happens, it's before it happens to influence it. And it isn't, I think it's clearly within our jurisdiction and clearly within our, our expectations, because we've, and I'll get to one in a minute, is to say what we would like to make sure that the General Assembly takes into consideration as they evaluate and assess those bills, just like a citizen would, that they would be, take the time, because certainly some people must not have, taken the time to read the Supreme Court majority opinions, and make sure that they are mindful of not only the decision, but the context and the content of those opinions in coming to a decision. And I think that is, you know, we didn't have any ability to do any... And I think that is, you know, we didn't have any ability to do anything about uranium mining either. You know, there wasn't a bill that had passed. It was just something that was proposed to allow them to do uranium mining, but we took a very strong position on uranium mining-
Spent money.
And spent money even on it, because if it passed, and if it moved on, it had serious implications. So I think another good example, where the Supreme Court has yet to decide how the Thirteenth and Fourteenth Amendment applies in all employment conditions for the LGBT community, and some of those are being litigated as we speak, we passed a resolution in strong support of treating all those groups the same, even though yet the constitutional application by the Supreme Court in all employment conditions has not yet been adjudicated. So we've had a consistent role and a practice in this body of advocating things and didn't wait for the law to be passed, didn't wait for the court to be adjudicated, because we came to a conclusion that it is, was the right thing to do. Now, some people may view that being in support of the Constitution is divisive. I think it's not. So, but everyone is entitled to their own opinion. I've gotten those emails too, and I have responded in great depth to all, to many of those emails. I can't do them all, because time won't permit, but I face my point, but I've gone back, and not based on what my emotions on the issue might be, or what my personal opinion might be, I've gone back to what has the Supreme Court said, which becomes the content and the meaning and the application of the Second Amendment. And that's what I'm supporting with this resolution, and I would want the members of the General Assembly, as they evaluate those 27 prefiled bills, to take that into consideration and make sure that they are making a learned and informed judgment based on judicial precedent, not just electoral outcomes, and not just on emotion, but on the law and on the constitutional principles. And I don't think that's a bad thing.
Yeah, I just, and I still haven't heard you answer the question. How does this help Virginia Beach?
Well, standing up for the Constitution always helps Virginia Beach.
No, that's, that's-
You don't disagree with my answer, but that's my answer.
No, no, John, I'm saying, the way you're framing it, for, I just, I'm, how does it help Virginia Beach on such an issue that's been so divisive for forever in the midst of coming off a tragedy? Help, just help me understand. I'm not trying to become, I really, this is a conversation we don't want to have.
I know. I think, because you're moving the issue from emotion and people's personal experiences to a more reasoned, unemotional, to a core foundational value which we all share. And if you can come to a core value that you all share, then you can have an unemotional, more rational discussion of where the common ground is. And it don't have to be like New Zealand, get everybody's guns, or take everybody's, how much ammunition they can have, or whatever the deal is, but you can start from a premise of where we are at. And then you can have a reasoned discussion between what's a reliable and reasonable infringement versus what is unreasonable. And I think unless you can establish the core that you start from, you can't have a good civil discourse. But if everyone can agree that the Supreme Court is the person that decides what the foundation is of the Constitution, now you've got the starting ground.
Right. So why not put forth a resolution where we had this discussion, we have this conversation, where we all can agree and put this forth?
We can have it tonight.
But the, it's-
Okay, at this point, Aaron, could we get Jim, and then I'll make a comment that I think will address your thing.
I just wanted to, and reasonable people can disagree on whether or not that this is helpful or-
I'm not leaving.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. That's okay. You guys can hug too. So reasonable people, I think, can disagree on whether or not this is helpful or not helpful, or what have you, based on your opinion on the particular thing. But I think something that you said, Aaron, and I have to, have to agree with John on this, and I was, I had written down my note about uranium mining. Every year, every single year, we advocate to the General Assembly before they start about things that may or may not come up. Uranium mining is a classic example, and I still remember years ago when I was on a VML committee, Tom Leahy, when he was Director of Public Utilities, went to Roanoke and met me there for a meeting, because we have, there's a group of people from the western part of the state that had no worry at all about uranium contamination in their drinking water, because they just thought it was just going to create jobs, whereas Tom sat there and went through the entire process of, and I still remember, maximum probable precipitation, and talked about the, I forget which hurricane it was, in 1960.
Was that Camille?
Camille.
Yep.
Camille. That, had that occurred with this uranium mining plan, would have wiped it out, wiped out any containment that they had designed, and would have contaminated drinking water. Post-Labor Day opening of schools is another example, where we've constantly been, been out there doing that sort of thing. You know, and there's one that's coming up now that I'm very concerned about, and it's something that Mr. Moss has talked about, and it's taking away our local option with respect to zoning issues, and I need to read more about that bill, but, but everything that I've heard just, you know, doesn't, doesn't sound good, and I'm very concerned about that. And when I saw the delegate who proposed his comments on it, that made me even more concerned, because he talked about how it was going to be a great thing for our city, and he didn't really say it was going to be a great thing for our citizens or for our neighbors, and I think that is something that we likely should, we should do this. And, you know, and I'll tell you, I mean, people have asked me, they go, "Why can't you guys just write a letter?" It's like, cool, we can write a letter, but it takes six votes to write a letter. Each one of us can write a letter individually, but it takes six people to do anything. And I think that's, that's the important part of this. So, so regardless of whether or not you agree with, agree with the whole concept or everything, there is nothing wrong, and we should be expected to lobby for our citizens and for the city and the General Assembly before they start, because frankly, we want to make sure that bad bills are killed, and the bills that are helpful to us. And, you know, we can debate back and forth whether or not you think this is a good or a bad one, but, but generally speaking, the process is something that, that we should do, in my opinion.
Okay.
Yeah, please.
My question would be then, the uranium mining that you guys talked about, that affects Virginia Beach, because it could potentially contaminate the water. As you said, if you get our water from Lake Aston, I can see why we would, we would be in a position to say, "Hey, this is going to affect our drinking water." Understand how that affects Virginia Beach?
So now, the other side of the coin was, it was going to create a lot of high-paying jobs for that particular area.
Well, and that, and that still comes down to affecting Virginia Beach. The local option to zoning with this housing bill, HB 152, I believe, John?
That's correct.
The housing bill, I can see how that affects Virginia Beach, of taking away people's personal rights and zoning issues, changing neighborhoods, the outlook of Virginia Beach. I see how that affects Virginia Beach. I see this resolution, I'm trying to understand, something we have no authority over, how does, in the midst of our healing from this tragedy, and there's people on both sides, and we said that, how does this help Virginia Beach?
Let me take a crack at that. And I think it kind of guides the principle about, you know, some of the decisions I've made, you know, affecting us and, you know, going forward. We, as an elected body, you know, we are the largest city in the Commonwealth, 453,000 people. And a lot of times, every council person is driven, some, we have floated resolutions based on input of one person from time to time. But with this particular one, okay, now, first of all, if I can go back, we were originally petitioned to label ourselves as a sanctuary city, okay? That was the initial, you know, intent for the group. But in speaking to other, a number of people and legal counsel and everything, we did not want to, you know, go that particular route, because it was a little, you know, a little bit of an extreme route that would have put us at odds, in my opinion, you know, against the law. But when we have a group of people that in this city are for both pro and con against, you know, gun rights, but once again, and I, you know, once again, I think it was articulated by the Vice Mayor and, you know, Mr. Moss, you know, the prefiling, yeah, a lot of the prefiling's don't see the light of day, but once again, it did spark a response by a group of people in the city that, you know, were accountable to. And what we're doing, I think, Aaron, in all honesty, we are taking action as a result of public input. To not have taken action, you know, think about this, and chances are tomorrow's open-mic night, you know, would be another vehicle of people coming forward and saying, "Okay, at least what kind of action are you taking? Are we taking an action? Yes. Is it optimal to, you know, some, everybody at this table? Certainly not." But, but what it does is shows that we, in fact, as a deliberative body, you know, yes, we are healing from a traumatic, a terrible, terrible situation. And a lot of people are, you know, as John said, you know, people are emotional about this, but let's get it down to the practical point, where at least we have rational discussions moving forward. You know, this is not an end-all tonight. This is hopefully just the beginning. And yes, I do believe it benefits the city of Virginia Beach. Barbara?
Go ahead, Sabrina.
Yeah, Sabrina?
You go ahead and have your-
No, please.
Well, I just wanted to say, in terms of talking about, you know, the victims of the tragedy, and we say we had to do something, and we had to act now, one of the things that I have been hearing is, we had an opportunity to act. Shortly after the tragedy, the resolution was brought forth to ask the General Assembly to give us the authority of where, making the decision where weapons go in our buildings as a concern of safety for the community and for victims of that tragedy. And we did not act. We pushed it off indefinitely. We did not discuss it. And so now the public is saying, "So you want to do something now? And so you're in a hurry now? But you didn't do anything then." So that's where that concern is coming from, that I believe Aaron is talking about and what I've heard. But the other thing I'd like to say is, I think we could have done this, the same action through the legislative agenda. I think it would have had the same effect. But I think my most, the most thing that I'm concerned about, what are the ramifications of the resolution? We pass it, you know, it goes forth. How is it going to affect our economy? How is it going to affect our community, you know, as a whole? Have we thought about the ramifications? Has anybody said anything about that? What's, what are the after-effects?
Well, let me just say this, in terms of the after-effects. First of all, I think what we're trying to do is, you know, just petition the General Assembly, you know, to consider what they're doing. Let them consider some of the ramifications of their actions. We're obviously going to have to await what happens in the General Assembly before we can react. And, you know, but, once again, and then, and be honest with your, you know, initiative on banning guns, that was a highly divisive issue that we just, at the time, I don't think we should have dealt with at that time.
Oh, and I think, to be clear, the resolution was to, to ask the General Assembly to give us the authority to decide where the weapons should go, not just banning weapons, because that terminology has a negative effect, and it gets people riled up, because that's the, that's the thought. You're trying to take away my weapons, you're trying to ban-
Right.
-my weapons. That's not what that resolution is about. And at some time or some point, I'd like to have a healthy discussion about that.
I would be glad to.
But yeah, that, that's, to be clear, that's what that resolution is.
Okay.
And I, and I do think, you know, the General Assembly, of course, will assess the ramifications, but we are taking, as a body, are making decisions, and there is an effect to our decision-making here on this resolution. And we should understand what the ramifications are.
You know, I think-
We should know that beforehand, before we pass something like this.
Well, yeah.
Because there will be consequences and ramifications.
John?
I think miss him.
Oh, miss Henry, I'm sorry.
My good judgment tells me I shouldn't say anything, but you all know me better than that. Uranium didn't have a thing to do with whether or not we were constitutional. This has come down, and we have had hundreds of emails over the last few weeks, and I've tried to read them all, pro and con, and the question is, do you support the Constitution? And that's what it's coming down to. And, and that's why I think the emotions are so high and divisive. It's judgment, it's judgment of each person based on where we stand on this one issue, whether or not we support the Constitution. And that's not good. I've read and reread and reread the Constitution in the last few weeks, and when we look at what they were faced with, I mean, the preamble says it all, and what they were trying to accomplish. And one of those is, is making certain that we've got domestic tranquility, and we don't have that right now. But anyway, this is not about whether we support the Constitution. And, and I think that's the divisiveness, and that's why we shouldn't be doing this. The emotions are so high, the way this particular thing has been brought to us, the way all of this is worded. Our role is to support the Constitution. Our role is not to interpret it. And, and I think when we look at the Constitution, it's not just one phrase or one amendment. It's the Constitution, it's the way it was constructed, and the way our founding fathers spent all that time putting together the way our government was going to work. It's in the Articles of the Constitution. The legis, they created the different levels of government, the different, the divisions of government, to be able to have the checks and balances and the balance of power and all of those things, and it defines our government, and it tells us how we're supposed to operate. And I think we're stepping out of that process with this, because as, as the local body, the local legislative body, I think we respect our other levels of government, and the General Assembly people have just been duly elected to go to Richmond and to do their job. And I think they all understand that they're supposed to be doing things that are constitutional. And I think, you know, this is, right at this point, they haven't even taken their oath of office. And, and a lot of things have been, in these emails I've been reading, have been said that they are doing these things that they aren't doing yet. And I think we really need to give them an opportunity to function first. And then, if we believe that there is something that is not constitutional, that they have enacted into law, then we, we appeal it to the courts. That's what the Constitution says we should do. And, and I just think that the whole basis of the Constitution and our form of government and how it's defined to operate is what is at stake here. And because this resolution talks all about the Second Amendment, it doesn't talk about the whole Constitution. I mean, it might say the whole Constitution, but it really talks about the Second Amendment. I think we fractured the First Amendment in what's been going on these past couple of weeks. And a lot of folks are not going to be here to speak from the other position because of fear. That's not good. And if we're ever going to get people to come together without emotion, and to come together around a table to talk about how we can restore our domestic tranquility, we've got to kind of start over. And, and I just don't think that where we are at this point is going to do that. It's been, it's been countered and placed and formed in a faction of doing something that is not legal. We can't have a Second Amendment sanctuary city. We can't, we can't say that we're not going to enforce the laws. That's not legal. And, and there are an awful lot of folks who believe that we can and we should, because they've been told that. And, and a part of our, our whole thing with our government is making sure everybody understands and is educated and knows the right process, and somehow or other, if we could all put all this back in a box and start over, but, you know, we can't at this point. And that's what's so troubling to me. How do we get it back to that point where we can all do away with the emotion, all of this referendum stuff, come together and say, "How do we address this problem of violence that we have in our, our community, in our, our society, whether it's through shootings or stabbing or whatever? We've got a problem." And, and we're not going to solve it by coming together with this accusations and animosity and labeling people and so forth. That's, that's just not where we ought to be. And I don't know how we get back, but I don't think the answer is the way this resolution is worded. I think if we had done what we thought we were going to do, and that was kind of get together and decide whether we were going to do anything, we could have perhaps come up with phrasing something- we could have perhaps come up with phrasing something that maybe would have said what we could have all agreed on if we thought we needed to do anything at all. And I just, this resolution is just too heavy on the Second Amendment. It doesn't say the whole Constitution and not in a fashion that it's genuine. I've got a lot of concerns. And I can tell you, I've lost a lot of sleep, haven't enjoyed my last week of the holiday at all, worrying about this because I'm very, very, very concerned about the division among this council and the division in the city. Got a lot of work to do. And somehow or other, we have to get beyond this.
If I could just say this, Barbara, and I truly respect your words. I think one of the frustrations we all have as an elected body and we share among friends, we are a Dillon rural state. And, you know, once again, to get our message across, you know, to, to our newly-elected, you know, body, I, I think is essential. But I think the other thing is, when we talk about, you know, the timing and the misperceptions, I think one of the things that we've gone out of our way was not to mention that this was a sanctuary thing, that we looked for language that was indeed collaborative in trying to bring, you know, folks together and try to build as much consensus that could be built in a topic where there is no consensus. Okay? Anybody else at this point? Okay, but listen, I thank you all for the discussion right now. And, you know, thank you all very much for your time. We'll see you at 6 o'clock. Thank you.